Welcome to a meeting of the 100 and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the public and media, consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act, and an advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice is also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hunter County Democrat, and sent to the clerks of Delaware Township, East Stamo Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Redding Township. The public have an opportunity to be heard as shown on the agenda. Please stand for Fike's loop.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do, Heather, can I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Charney, Mr. Davidson.
Here.
Mrs. Hughes.
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg.
Here.
Dr. Win, Mr. Nickel.
Here.
Mr. Rashard.
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell, and Mr. Panico.
Here. Kind of a motion to approve the regular minutes of October 11th and the regular and executive s-
No, those aren't being moved.
Oh.
Those are just for information.
Oh, right, okay. Dr. Moore, superintendent's report.
Thank you. Tonight, I do need to begin with some reflection on some losses in our community. At the end of October, we received confirmation of the passing of Lauren Cho, who's a graduate from the class of 2009. As a student, Lauren was a shining star in our theater arts department and in many corners of our school. On the 29th of October, we also learned of the passing of Dominic Gentile, class of 2012. Dominic had graduated as a veterinarian from Iowa State University after attending Rutgers, after graduating here from Central, and was working in White House Station, in a veterinary hospital there. And we also mourn Mr. Paul Urban, who passed away on Friday, this past Friday, November 12th. Paul had served as a social studies teacher here from 2001 to his retirement in 2020. We remember him as a dedicated and sweet and gentle educator, father, and husband. As we prepare for this season, please just join me in a moment of silence, not simply to mark these empty seats at holiday tables, but to remember and honor and celebrate all that these three wonderful friends brought to our Central family here. So please join me in a moment of silence for these three. We'll move on to our business in my report this evening, but thank you, thank you for that. Mr. Charneys, or Dr. Charneys arrived too, if you want to log him in. Thanks. So, on to the business. We do have a HIB motion on the agenda that does need movement tonight, and we have several cases to discuss in closed session tonight, as well as a first presentation to the board. I don't have data for you just yet, but I need to share that we're experiencing an increase in HIB allegations as we head deeper into the school year, and we're also seeing spikes in non-HIB discipline concerns. We're seeing a heightened incidence of concerning behavior on our computer network as well as students use Google Chat and Google Docs and various other services. We're concerned certainly about all of this and working from all corners to meet those challenges. We're increasing our monitoring of network activity, for example, and also discussing the place that each of our network services holds in our program. Look for more discussion on that soon as we expand some of our technologies for both monitoring and responding to some of the concerns there. We're also working on concerns in classes, and we'll be providing more discussion and learning opportunities so that students have more inspiration for making some better choices with one another. We note that many of our concerns are sharpest with our ninth and 10th grade students, and we were prepared for that, given the compromised socialization that those younger students had through the pandemic. We're very worried, though, about what seems to be a potential increase in bias-related incidents. And I started to talk about that last spring with you all, but we're starting to see it play out in our HIBs and in our other areas as well. I don't have data to share just yet, but I'll be sharing some of that with you very soon, as we pull some of the information together. And I don't want to underscore, I don't want to understate how wonderful it is for all of us to be back with the students. We've been feeling that, and certainly still riding on that wonderful feeling of togetherness that we have with the kids right now, after last year and the spring before that. But we are seeing concerning signs, and they've led me to be less worried about learning gaps as a result of the pandemic. I think we're getting a good sense of those and handling those, but becoming more worried about students' actions with one another. Our responses to these sorts of things, always grounded in helping students to take care of themselves and one another, are about not just response to these specific incidents that we're seeing, but also larger initiatives aimed at the school's culture, in particular, how we can affect some better supervision and education for the kids that can help us all move forward. So there'll be much more to share with you on that soon, but I wanted to open that conversation with you tonight and just give you a sense of what we're seeing and how we're starting to understand it. We do also, we have an organizational item on the agenda, if I can switch gears a little bit. We have an organizational item on the agenda which doesn't need your movement yet, but which I put here just in case you have any questions. This is a required policy which will move, I'll recommend for movement for first read on the 22nd. This is the policy that's required for our compliance with Executive Order 253, dealing with COVID-19 vaccination and also regular testing of our staff members. It's there for any discussion or questions that you have tonight, but I won't ask you to vote on that until next Monday night for first reading. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first is from Mrs. Jessica Cangelosi-Hayde on a recent selection of state assessments that we delivered, and also on graduation pathways data from last year. Both of these are required reports by the state, but we're eager to continue to add to our understanding of learning gaps through those state Start Strong assessments, even though the detail they provide is somewhat light. Mrs. Cangelosi-Hayde has her presentation on the screen, but as we settle into this space, which I'll talk about a little bit, we're going to make that presentation available in board docs as well, but for the board members here and the folks joining us, you can take a look from your seats, and she'll talk through it as we go. Jessica, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present our fall assessment results to you. This fall and this year in general, 2021, looked a little different, as you know. So I'm going to go through these results, but I also want to focus on other forms of data that will get beyond these assessments, and then, most importantly, what we will do with that data. So I did want to provide some information for everyone about the Start Strong assessments. We had the Start Strong assessments, New Jersey adopted them and put them in place this year to satisfy the federal testing requirements for the, from the Federal Department of Education, due to the cancellation of the NJSLA in the spring of 2021. And as you know, it was canceled 2021, it was also canceled in 2020. Start Strong assessments tested many different areas, a little bit then different than what we had tested for NJSLA. So we were testing students in Algebra I, Geometry in Algebra II, English Language Arts grades nine and 10, and Science grades nine and 12. So a lot of testing to be done. It was our first time using Start Strong assessments, as I said, so we don't have historical data, which sometimes makes things a little bit tricky in terms of comparison and analyses. The good thing, because this was a lot of testing, the positive is that it was a shorter testing time, reduced testing units. So most tests had one, maybe two units, 45 to 60 minutes per test, so per Algebra I, per Geometry, per Algebra II, so on. And the questions, there were either 10 to 25 questions, depending on the subject area. So I believe English Language Arts had the shorter amounts due to some reading and textual analysis, so about 10 questions there. Math and Science had some more questions on the assessments. The state designed these as diagnostic assessments to provide information to educators about what levels of support may be needed throughout the school year. And it is important to note, and that's why I did make a note of it here, that this testing does not replace the NJSLA that will be in place as spring of 2022, and we will have a new test in spring of 2022, the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment for 11th graders. So there is quite a bit of testing to be done this school year. So as I said, Start Strong data is reported a little bit differently than what you're used to for the NJSLA. So students don't earn a level in terms of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, they earn instead a kind of support level. So it starts with less support may be needed, some support may be needed, which is in the middle, and strong support may be needed. I think it's important to note that the support levels are kind of deficits-based language. So a student who has a perfect score, which we did see some perfect scores, a student who has a perfect score still got less support may be needed, and I think that's important to note. Right now where we are with data, we have whole-level data in terms of levels of support. We know, though, that the individual student reports, which will be available electronically the end of November, have more skills level data. We just don't have that as a whole for the school. So you'll see that when I go into detail with the data, that I'm not disaggregating necessarily by skill, I can only disaggregate right now by support level. And then in mid-December, we will receive hard copies, we will send them home to students. And new this year, they are putting in video individual student reports. And so that's very interesting, I'm interested to see what that will contain, supposed to give some helpful information in terms of what the support level means. So we look forward to seeing that, and I don't know if that will remain for NJSLA or the NJGPA, but it's an interesting take on reporting assessment data for students. So I will go into the summary of results. You're going to see many different data tables here, and please bear with me, I want to compare them for you and kind of talk you through them. So we're going to start with math, and here I'm comparing the levels of support in our different math testing areas. So we're looking at Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. And I think the most important thing to note here is looking at where we see a much higher level of strong support needed, and that is in Algebra I. So if you look at the levels of support needed in Geometry and Algebra II, they're pretty similar. We had about 40%, 45% in Geometry and Algebra II that needed less support, which is pretty good. That means that they're doing well, they're on track. Those students in some support, which is around 30 or so for Geometry and Algebra II, they're on the bubble, so they're doing pretty well as well, as long as they have good supports, they should be successful. But it's this group here that we want to pay attention to, strong support needed. And so it was shocking to us to see such a high percentage of students in Algebra I that need strong support. This is really critical to us, because this is like a gateway course in high school math, very critical that they have success in this so that they continue on. I do also want to note that many of the students in Algebra I come to us from our four different sending districts. So this, a lot of this data is data that we have to then give to our K-8 districts to say, this is how the Algebra I students did, this means we need to take a look at your curricula to make sure we're truly articulating to our high school math department. So that's what I want us to focus on there. So I'll do the same for English Language Arts. Again, we tested in English Language Arts in grades nine and 10, and the results there were pretty similar. You can see 60% or more, less support needed, which is really good, and then we're sitting around 20% for strong support needed. And Science, some very interesting data, and I do want to make a note about Science. So again, similar to what I was talking about in Algebra I, and receiving, most of those students coming to us from our K-8s, obviously, Science grade nine is the same situation. And I'm noting that because there is such a disparity there between grade nine and grade 12. So that's something interesting to note as well. I also wanted to note that our 12th grade students, not all of them are currently in a science class, and so I want to give them a little shout-out, give them some kudos. They really performed well, they did a great job, even for those who aren't currently sitting in a science class. But you can see here, in terms of support, the 12th graders far outperformed the ninth graders. And so again, this relies on us going back to our sending districts to say, what is your science curriculum, how are you articulating, what kind of core science skills are you focusing on? And that's something we are doing in our articulation meetings. So next, I wanted to do some disaggregation by different subgroups. So first, we're going to start with race. I did disaggregate race by each individual test, and I apologize, because I know that means it's a lot of charts, but I did that because not every test has all the different racial subgroups, and I thought that was important. So you'll see that here, in Algebra I, we have white, black, Asian, and then we have two or more races. That's not necessarily represented in every assessment, because if we have less than 10 students, we do not report it due to confidential or personally identifiable information. So here, what I want you to look at is the orange, that's where the strong support is needed. So hopefully it jumps out at you, because that's what we want to focus our interventions on. So looking at Algebra I, white students are sitting over here, you can see actually about an even amount with black students. Asian students in general did better than our white and black students, and students two or more races, I don't want to say did worse, but are showing a stronger need for support. So that's Algebra I. And then I would like to look at Geometry, which you can see they look very different. So Geometry, and again, most of the students in Geometry are students that we had the year before. So our white students here seem to be outperforming our black peers. Our Asian students have the, and our two, our students in two or more races have the least need for support. Also important to note, kind of the disparities in the data. And then when we look at Algebra II, this one is difficult to look at, because we only have data for white and Asian students. But I included it because I think it's important to note, we did have six black students and six students in two or more in the race category, we can't report them because it's not over 10. But I think it also speaks to the need for us to ensure that our students of color are continuing and are being represented in our more advanced math classes. So this is the data here, you can see that just a little bit stronger support needed for the white students over the Asian students. So next, we'll look at ELA, again disaggregated by race. So this is ELA 9. And so when we look at this, we see some disparities, as you can see, stronger support needed for our black students than needed for our white and our Asian students. And it looks a little bit different in ELA 10, but again, stronger support needed for our black students. Looking at grade nine Science, you're seeing a similar trend, that our black students need stronger support than our white and Asian students, and the students who are two or more races, interestingly enough, none of them scored in the category of less support needed. And then grade 12 Science results are also, I apologize, I don't know why that's saying male and female. This is white students and this is black students, I don't know why it's looking like that, I very much apologize, we'll fix that on your attachment. But our black students are needing stronger support than our white students and our Asian students. So next, we wanted to look at ethnicity. So for the rest of these subgroups, what I did was, I did overall averages, instead of going test by test by test. So I do think that's important to note, because sometimes there are differences. So looking at math and looking at Hispanic versus non-Hispanic students. Again, I would like us to look at strong support. So you see here a very large disparity in strong support between our non-Hispanic and our Hispanic students. In English Language Arts, you're going to see that disparity as well. And you can see it, you can also see it here, even though this is in the less support needed category, you can see that the non-Hispanic students really outperformed the Hispanic students. And again, you'll see this in Science. So you're seeing some trends here and things that we need to look at as a district. So then I wanted to look at free and reduced lunch. So free and reduced lunch, we have, and this is math results, you are seeing that there is a stronger need for support for our students on free and reduced lunch. We are seeing that again for English Language Arts, and you're seeing that again for Science. And then I also wanted to look at students with IEPs and 504s. And I will say that this is overall data, but the individual test results really vary and are quite different. And sometimes what was interesting to note is the 504 students outperformed the students that were not eligible, but because we typically group those together for our reporting on assessments for the state, I did the overall averages. So looking at this for our math results, there is strong support needed for IEP 504 In ELA, you can see a difference as well, that there's strong support needed for the 50, the IEP 504, or stronger support needed for those that don't have, that do have IEPs or 504s over students who don't. And then in Science, although in Science, I found it interesting that the disparity was not as great. So next, I want to talk about graduation data, and then I want to bring it all together to really focus on what are we doing now, now that we have this data. So our graduation data this year for 2021 is interesting because we had a cancellation or a waiving, I should say, of the state assessment graduation requirements. So typically, I would report on how many students graduated due to meeting the regular requirements and testing requirements, how many students graduated due to like a portfolio submission, how many students graduated due to alternative testing requirements, like an SAT or ACT or an ASVAB, and then how many students were kind of exempt from it through, due to an IEP process. But that was all waived this year, so I just really have our raw data, which is 94.3% graduation rate. Just so that you know, in 2020, it was 94.1, and in 2019, it was 94.2. So very similar. What I did want to take a look at is kind of, again, disaggregated data of graduation rate here. So you can see some disparities among the different races. I focused in on this one, our Hispanic students, and I'm sorry, that's by ethnicity and race, our Hispanic students, the graduation rate was 80.3%, I think that's important to note. And then looking at free and reduced lunch, 82.4%. Special education, 88.1%. That one, we have to really look at that a little bit deeper, because some students, as part of their IEP, do not graduate within four years, so there are reasons why it is lower. And then, of course, this one, and we talked about this last month when I presented the access scores, the ELL graduation rate, so that's 25%, important to note there as well. Yeah. And when you say, you mean like after they leave here?
After they leave here, if they don't graduate, just to see what's happening.
We could try, and we will probably love to do that, it's hard to get in touch with them sometimes. So, and that's something I know the state would like to develop, like pre-K to 16, to figure out where they are, but it is hard, like if they don't stay within a public institution and they go to work or they get a GED, it's hard for us to necessarily know what happens if they don't get back in touch with us. Especially like, you know, I look at, when I look at this data, like the ELL definitely sticks out, and there is a transience to that population. And we can break this down, what you see in this population especially is, the longer they stay at Central, or they've been at Central, the higher their graduation rate is, which is good, that's what we would expect, but we only have four years with them, and sometimes with our Ls, if they come in later, we have one year or two years with them, so it does make it difficult.
One of the things we talked about in these conversations before is how an individual student can show up in multiple times throughout those data. So you could have a student who is an ELL program student, who may also be, you know, potentially free and reduced lunch, might also be classified or with a 504, and so they're sort of showing up multiple times. So just something to be aware of, that, and by the same token, a student who succeeds and graduates is likewise potentially showing up in multiple categories.
Correct.
Just something to point out.
Yeah. So this is probably the most critical slide to talk about, what are our next steps and what are our interventions, what are we doing with this? So one of the challenges with this data is it's just showing support by very vague kind of three levels, which is difficult for us to digest. So we, it is important for us to use other sources of data other than just the Start Strong Assessment data. So as you know, we implemented the use of Linkit last year, so we're using some of the benchmarks in there. They have three NJSLA-aligned assessments that students take throughout the year, so they take one in September, they take one in January or early February, and then they take one again in May to kind of track their progress. We also have department benchmarks that each department has been working on, and you'll hear about these as our supervisors begin to present to you. Those are also being put in Linkit so that we kind of have one data warehouse for all those important assessments. We have things like PSAT, so we did administer PSAT to our ninth graders in school, and we had many 10th and 11th graders take it on the Saturday. We intend to, I don't think we get that data until December, but that does align with when we get the individual student reports with hopefully skill level data from Start Strong, that we could begin to triangulate that data to see where really are the skill gaps. And so when we have that data, what we're looking to do is really target the skills that are, that there is, that there are gaps on, whether it's whole level, so it could be done right as a tier-one intervention within the whole class, or it could be done through like group tutoring, which is more like a tier-two intervention, or one-on-one, which is more of a tier-three intervention. So you will hear more from Mr. McIsaac about this, as he begins to talk about his data and what English is doing, but I thought it was important to note that that's what we're doing. So all of our teachers have gone through professional development on learning acceleration. We did that last year, and that has been a push from the New Jersey Department of Education. We've received grant funds specifically targeted with learning acceleration. And learning acceleration is a way of saying that teachers are going to diagnose the critical prerequisite skills before they teach, and then they're going to deliver kind of just-in-time instruction to catch students up in order to be able to meet the new targeted skills and content that they need them in order to be proficient in whatever that area is. So that's really one of our biggest kind of whole interventions that we can offer. But then there are other things that we're doing. So through our grant funds, we have purchased for math especially, because you do see on those charts, a stronger need for support in math. We have purchased a software called iXL, and so that gives skill-specific tutorials and assessments to test students along to help them with whatever particular skill it is that they may have a gap in. We also have an RTI model here, which we're really lucky to have, it's built into some of the teachers' teaching schedules, and that's for math and English. So throughout the day, there are teachers who have RTI, which I should define, stands for Response to Intervention. And so those teachers work with the teachers, whatever teachers are teaching during the block, and they may push into class, they may pull out, they may meet with students in study hall to make sure they have some additional supports. We started this year an after-hours tutorial from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, it's done virtually. That, I will admit, that has been a challenge to get students to attend, that's a tough time for students, but it is available there for the students if they need it. Further along in the school year, we offer programming called Pathways to Proficiency, and this is to really target those students who need the strong support and who are perhaps in danger of not meeting their graduation requirements, their assessment requirements, to make sure that they can become proficient and meet those requirements. Last year, we began our Stars tutorial, to have success for students as well, and that was more individualized support for students, going back to more of a tier-three intervention. For our Ls, they are a part of these programs, but we also have special programming for them, we do after-school program with them, with our Title III funds. And then we have a variety of summer programming, although we realize that the summer programming is not going to help this year, but we do continue summer programming and we want to, we do have additional funds with our ARP-SER grant to offer even more summer programming next summer, to ensure that there's good foundational skills there. And then last but not least, we're continuing to measure progress, and so a lot of times this is through quarterly benchmarks in our departments, each department's work differently, but we want to- Each department's work differently, but we want to continue to measure the progress of the students towards mastering or at least becoming proficient on those skills. So those are the things that we're doing. I don't know if there's any questions, but that is the end of the presentation. Go ahead, Dr. Charny.
I've got a couple of questions. One, you said that for students of color, attend our higher math classes, like it's Algebra II. But you can't report if it's less than 10, so I'm assuming it's less than 10. But what proportion does that represent of the total population of students of color?
You're saying of the, this, the lower number, what percentage are enrolled in Algebra II? You know, I don't know that exact number, but is that the, I can get that to you.
Yeah, but you, you said you could not report Algebra II.
For those two subgroups.
Because of those, yeah, those two subjects.
Yes.
Presume that they're less than 10.
Yes, they're six.
But what proportion does that represent out of all African-American or students, students of color in the district?
I don't know that exact number, but I can get that for you. And that is something Dr. Moore is beginning, oh, you're pulling it up for me.
Yeah, so if you, one of the things we talked about last spring in the Equity Report that we did, was that March-April? Can't remember exactly when that was. But you'll see, one of the metrics that we have is tracking disproportionalities in students', students' presence in these higher-level courses. And so what we do see are disproportionalities that are connected to race and ethnicity in our AP courses, our dual enrollment courses, our academy courses. And and so to answer your question more broadly before we get the, the exact numbers for you, the proportion of students in those higher programs is lower than their proportion in the full population.
Correct. They're underrepresented.
I don't think we can say that they're attending our more demanding courses in math.
Right.
So the, some students are, yes, but that is a point of...
But less than 10.
Yeah, that is a point, well, in Algebra II.
In Algebra II.
That is a point of concern as we look at opportunity across our program, absolutely, is the disproportionalities. And that's part of the, part of the board goal that you all passed last month is dealing specifically in Jessica's departments with that concern. And we see it mostly in, in our STEM subjects. We see it a little less in some of our humanities subjects.
The other question I have is, in one slide where you, it appeared you aggregated all the ELA tests and all the math tests. Is there, are we just thinking, well, what are we thinking? Because it's a different, geometry is a different skill set than algebra.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, I...
This one? Like, are you talking about the, the whole level kind of data?
Well, that's ELA.
Yeah.
You had one with math.
This one? Yeah.
Math results.
Yes.
But I thought you, you combined, maybe I'm mistaken.
That's okay. There were a lot, there was a lot of slides.
Well, we'll provide this...
Yes, you'll have this.
Presentation to you certainly for, we want to take additional questions into student life and program or even into next month's or next week's meeting even.
Yeah.
So we'll have a copy of this presentation for you as well.
And so the, my last question really, maybe, is how... I know students aren't, you can't get them to stay after school.
Yeah.
So that's every district. So what are our plans to meet their needs during school?
So I mean, we're really leaning on, for math and English, that RTI model because we have them. We also have, and I should have put it in here, but it's already ingrained in our system, the Block Five tutorial. Not everyone can stay for Block Five, even though we do offer busing for some. So we would love to be able to offer these things either through the RTI model that they can get a pull-in or a push-out of their English or math class, or that they could have the support during their, their, their study hall. And then on top of that, we are relying on teachers to kind of work with the students and, and do that learning acceleration and that just-in-time instruction for them. It's not always possible to completely catch the student up, as you know, but that's an important piece to the puzzle.
So I'm, you know, I'm just doing some higher math in my head. You have, according to that, not 60% of our students in Algebra I are in need of strong support. So luckily, 600 kids per class, so 360 kids are in need of strong support. RTI is not going to answer that.
And that's why we need that, the teachers, their general education teachers, to really lean into that learning acceleration. The other thing is that strong support is very generalized, so it doesn't, it's not skill-specific yet. We are apparently getting skill-specific data. But that will be a big piece because you're right, that is so many students. How do you manage that?
You, you can't manage it in Tier One, Tier Two, or Tier Three. So you, you have to have some kind of backup system in place that will answer their needs. So it, it may be academic centers. I'm just thinking out loud. ESER funds should cover staffing during school in every period, and for example, math lab type.
We do have math lab, yeah.
Yeah, but again...
It's hard to manage it all.
Kids in the math lab, it's just not going to suit us.
Yeah.
I would advocate that we got to scale up.
Yeah, that's a, it's an important point.
Will give you the, the, the money to do that. And it's got to be very innovative thinking because you're not going to catch these kids up if they're 360, 400 kids, and that's just strong support. Some support...
Some support is important as well, yes.
You have virtually most of the class.
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Cantrell, how many items are on the Algebra I assessment? Do you recall?
I think there were 25, 20-ish, 20 to 25.
So we have a single assessment of 20 to some, 20-some items, and we're getting this sort of traffic light kind of result.
Yeah, I like that description, a traffic light.
Student needs less support, student needs some support, student needs a lot of support. This is where the PSAT that we gave to all ninth graders becomes really important to us as we get those data back, because we'll get much sooner, and I think much stronger than from the state assessments, we'll get a better sense of real college and career readiness measurements there from the PSAT nine.
Yeah, we can't rely on just the one assessment.
Yeah. And so there's a constellation of assessments to bring together here as well. Our Linkit's important. But you're exactly, you know, certainly, we're in agreement that as we look at our, our federal and our ARP and ESER funds, some of those interventions that, that Jessica listed up there, like iXL Math and some others are funded directly out of ESER for us this year and for a couple of years, I believe, as we look at the three-year window for that grant.
Yes.
So yeah, we're, we're poised, and we expect too that as we get a better sense on each student's individual skills, strengths, and weaknesses. I mean, it's one thing to say a student needs strong support, but on what?
Right, exactly.
We'll be able to, we'll be able to tackle those specific deficiencies much more, much more flexibly and effectively, once we have more information about what those are. We worry, we always worry, and you'll hear us talking a lot more about ninth-grade Algebra I. Ninth-grade Algebra I, we always, whenever we show assessment data, are always showing concerns about how they're doing, whether it's at the beginning of the year from these assessments or at the end of the year from things like NJSLA formerly, formerly Park. But we grow increasingly concerned that ninth-grade Algebra I students, who are our math students, who did not have the opportunity to accelerate in middle school, they land here and take Algebra I with us, and they come in lagging behind in some skills, and that has us deeply concerned. And we're showing it here as well. So even after, well, not even, but certainly compounded after our pandemic experience that their, their skills gaps might even be wider than they are in a traditional year. So we've got a lot of, of work still to do to understand that. Teachers on a day-to-day basis know their kids, and they're attacking these things, but our assessments are going to be very important as well.
Good.
Do we know whether the questions on these assessments were aligned with New Jersey Student Learning Standards?
They, they apparently were. I haven't, I didn't see the questions. I can't, I don't know that for sure. I don't know, I mean, Pearson developed the assessment, and they have the experience developing the questions for NJSLA, so...
We're assuming that they are.
I'm assuming, but I didn't see the questions. I don't know kind of at what level the questions were written. And it's so new, and it, and the process for approving the assessment was so expedited that it, it's hard to really say how, how excellent the questions were.
Yeah.
So in, in forthcoming data from the state, will there be information with regards to, and you referred to this with, relative to the math situation, where we can see who did well and who did poorly on specific standards? So that we have finer-grain data that we can use to target students more specifically?
It's still unknown. They, in their, their test guide that they released, they, it does show that there is skill level data specific to each student. The difficulty is they don't provide that for the district as a whole. So meaning on a skill, you know, comparing to texts, we're not going to get that data as a whole, but the individual report may have that. And that's what makes that a little bit difficult for a teacher, because then they can't pull their course and say, oh, look, my whole class needs to help on that skill. They're having to look at each individual report. They may change that. I hope, in fact, I hope they do, but that, we were told that's not the level of data that we'd be getting.
And the other question I have too is, do we know what the criteria were that the state used in determining who is in need of strong some or less support? In other words, were they cutoff scores or what?
Yeah, it was a cutoff of a raw score. I don't know how they determined what that was. Normally they, for, like in NJSLA, they normally go through a multi-year process of kind of vetting the scores, having a committee review what the cutoff should be. That didn't happen because the process was so expedited. So there is some fuzziness to the levels perhaps, especially those who may have been on the cusp.
Right, and that speaks to Dr. Moore's point about the importance of additional data to help us make sense of this.
Correct, yes.
Gotcha.
Well, and this too, if we think about what this is meant to measure. So this wasn't, for, again, looking at Algebra I, this was an assessment, 20 to 25 problems. This was an assessment of whether or not students were ready
Ready.
to participate in, whether they had a good foundation to participate in a high school-level Algebra I course.
Correct.
So their entire math educational experience from kindergarten up through eighth, eighth grade was bottled up in this 20-question assessment that then, you know, we got that kind of results on. Needs a little support, needs no support, you know, like, so you can see where I'm going with this. That this is, this is important for us as directionals, but we can't get the, the details out of it that we need. So there are important directionals here, and Jess has presented on a lot of important directionals on a macro level about what this, what this looks like across all the different kinds of populations in our school. But we need all of that additional assessment data to really zero in on the individual student level, and, and through iXL Math and the other things and all the teacher diagnostics that go on all the time. You know, we're, they're, they're good at that, but we, we don't have the mechanisms yet to report on it for you until we have these other pieces in place.
Thank you.
And those PSAT scores are going to be most important when they come back in, in early December or mid-December.
Dr. Charny?
How about our most important source of data, the Algebra I teachers?
Yeah.
What do they say?
I, I think you're, and Mr. Cole, our math supervisor, will be presenting to everyone in December. But there are some, I don't want to say discrepancies, but it, I think it's good that we have a second set of data in the teachers. You will hear from the teachers, and I, and it's not just our Algebra I teachers, it's teachers of freshmen, that they do feel that students are, there are some gaps, I'm going to say. And that's academically as well as socially, emotionally. So it, it has, and that has an impact on the academics. But certainly, there are some gaps there. And it's hard to know, is it because there was coverage loss during the pandemic? So teachers just moved slower, and maybe they didn't get to certain skills? Or is it because they didn't, they were taught those skills, but they're not proficient in them? And those are two different, you know, you can handle those two things differently, depending on what the interventions are and what the skill is. Good. Any other questions?
Jessica, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have...
Mr. McIsaac?
A, a second conversation from Mr. Brendan McIsaac tonight. He's our supervisor of English. He's going to present on work in the English department, and we'll touch on sort of how some of these things are playing out in that department as well. Now, the Student Life and Program Committee at its meeting last week, last Monday, formulated some questions to help guide Mr. McIsaac's presentation today. So I do urge everyone, if we come out of this presentation with still some questions unanswered or some new questions strike you over the next week or so, then we want to gather those and bring them back to, to Mr. McIsaac to help, maybe through the Student Life and Program Committee or through some follow-up presentations here to the full board, we'll, we'll be able to, to flesh out some answers for you. Go ahead, Mr. McIsaac. It's all yours.
All right. Hi, thank you. Everyone hear me okay? I, I want to, I want to apologize for committing the cardinal sin of following a presentation with a presentation. I thought briefly of doing it as an interpretive dance, but I thought that wouldn't go well for any of us, and a few of us would probably get hurt in the process.
That doesn't play well to the, to the online audience either.
So just introducing a few members of the English department, a few weeks ago when we had Spirit Week on our Decades Day, there was a group of us who decided to go with the 80s grunge look, and that is our hoped-for forthcoming album of the Seattle sound that we hope to pull off. But it's really just a way of saying that I have a great department of really dedicated, creative, and dynamic individuals who really sort of embrace any challenge and are constantly reinventing what they do and what we do here at the school. A few quick words on structure. Ms. Cantrell, she had asked that I talk about that a little bit. Just reading the room here, I'm going to say everybody had a high school experience like I did, where you probably took an English I, English II, English III, and English IV. Somewhere along the line, one of those became American Lit, another one became Brit Lit, and maybe in the 90s somewhere, one of them became World Lit. We've never followed that kind of prescriptive model here per se. Each of our levels tends to be multi-genre approach. And the other thing is, over the course of students' time here, the choices they have available to them continue to expand. So we do start with sort of a core freshman experience, but all, and that's offered at an academic level, a CP, and an honors level. But by sophomore year, we've begun layering in things like AP Seminar, which is part of the AP Seminar and Research, Capstone Experience, which they can take as sophomores, they can begin as sophomores or begin as juniors. By junior year, our honors kids, the kids who have been in honors freshman and sophomore English, we are really trying to move them to that AP track, and the majority of them go into AP Language. I will say that, you know, we have good levels of success there, and in a given year, we have about 200 kids going into AP Language. So upwards of 30% of the grade, where a lot of traditional schools and approaches will have that closer to, to 10% or less in some cases. And we have very high levels of success with students who are interested into moving into that, that level of challenge. We also open up some honors classes, some additional honors classes to the kids at the grade 11 level. That course, which I'll mention a little bit later, does actually have a little bit of a global focus, but not in the traditional sense, but rather in terms of very contemporary literature. That's where you'll find your books, like your Ayam Malalas, or the Stories of Boy Soldiers, or books about youth around the world and the kinds of experiences that they are having. And then by 12th grade, we really try to open it up. And a few years ago, we surveyed the students to kind of find out what kinds of experiences they wanted to have as they culminated their time with us, and we got great feedback from them. They wanted sci-fi and fantasy. They wanted sports and literature. They wanted media and literature. They wanted short stories. So we began to develop and offer all of those courses, and they are thankfully robustly selected each year. And I think allowing kids to really customize a senior experience that they enjoy, and the teachers really enjoy giving to the kids as well. So again, it's this idea of expanding options and opportunities for... So again, it's this idea of expanding options and opportunities for kids as they move through our program. And we really allow kids to move from level to level. If they want to take that challenge, we encourage them to take that challenge. And we work with them and over the years, I can't, I don't have pandemic era data, but I would say we would see in a given year, the number of kids stepping up to an honors level if we had third, you know, high 20 to 30% freshmen, it was going over 30 into sophomore year and going up again into junior year. This, I think, is really more where the magic happens, the philosophy and sort of practices. And some of it, I think, speaks to a little bit of what Dr. Charney was alluding to. And again, if I if I go back and read the room and talk about our typical high school English experience, most of us probably remember a high school experience where we were given every single book that we were going to read and we were told you will read this and you will read this. And we will read it together and discuss it as a class. And that will more or less be the totality of our experience. We take a very mixed approach and it's one that's developed over the years. The structures that we use in the classroom, uh, reading and writing workshop really seek to kind of upend the stand and deliver approach of instruction. But really to become sort of a side-by-side approach where kids are always reading and always writing and we're always right there beside them. Modeling good reading, modeling good writing, sharing those practices and modeling those practices and having students engage in those practices as well. A number of years ago, as we sought to diversify the choice element in curriculum, we brought back in silent sustained reading because we wanted to demonstrate if we value reading. Uh, I think one of my critiques when I stepped into this position was when I asked teachers, what's most important to us? And they said, reading and writing. And I had to sort of bluntly say, why are those the two things I'm least likely to see happening in the classroom? So we brought reading back into the classroom. We brought the writing back into the classroom so that teachers could very closely engage with those processes with students. And a lot of these practices are very common in K-8 instruction, less so in high school instruction. But you see a lot of conferencing, both around reading and writing, and you really have that opportunity to talk to a student one-on-one. And teachers who might have been initially hesitant about engaging in those practices learn very quickly in a few questions, you can find out if a kid is reading or not reading and what they can tell you about their understanding of it. So they develop lots of good processes where the students themselves will now often lead those conferences. And it's often then targeted to specific skills. Talk to me about theme. Talk to me about conflict. Talk to me about characterization. Tell me what you're understanding. What are the big ideas that are happening here and how can we trace that through the duration of our reading? The reading itself, we kind of do a division of thirds. So a third of the things that we read, we will read as a class. A third of the things that we'll read, you will read in small groups, literature circles. And a third of the things that you read will be your own independent selection because one of the things we wanted to do was to create lifelong readers. We didn't want to create students who came out of high school hating reading and stopping reading. And the feedback we've gotten from kids and parents has been phenomenal because sadly, they will tell you, this is the first time I've read a book in in years of school because you've empowered a kid to make a selection. And I've seen that happen even in my own instruction. A book that I might give you, you might resist because it's not your choice. But if I say, pick something over here, you're going to grab it, you're going to find something that speaks to you, you're going to read it, and I'm going to have conversations with you and I'm going to get you to write about it as well. More recently, on the writing side, the past three years, we've partnered with the National Writing Project. And we've really been trying to um, diversify our the writing that kids do in class. And this has been a a multi-year undertaking and things we've been doing and being very creative with. But it really comes down to authenticity. Again, if I go back to the majority of what our writing experiences were, it was probably things like book reports. Uh, and those of you who wrote book reports probably went out into a world and discovered that book reports don't exist in the world outside of English classrooms. So what we've tried to do is identify what is the writing in the real world that gets at the skills that we want kids to to learn and be able to do? And how do we have them engage with and create things that excite them? So book reports don't exist, but book reviews exist everywhere, from Amazon to newspapers to what have you. And you read them, you learn what the characteristics of a well-written piece of writing is, which invariably partakes of multiple genres from argument to narration to explanation. And using modeling from those samples, those lessons and students' own work, you create things that look like re writing in the real world. So when you're doing analysis, you could be reviewing a restaurant, you could be reviewing a movie, you could be reviewing your favorite sports team uh, or a game even. And kids engage with that and they understand the concepts of analysis and explanation and how to engage an audience. We've also done a lot with just creative digital kinds of writing. Our freshmen and sophomores start their digital portfolios. We have teachers having kids delivering TED Talks, creating video essays that look like everything from um, YouTube explainer videos to um, really creative narrative narrative and in some cases heart-wrenching sort of stories that kids can tell in a video format where they're now thinking not only in terms of text, but visual, music and bringing that all together and something that they really get invested in. Moving on to what's new this year, I think recently, over the past couple of months, you've had the opportunity to approve several new courses. We did a revision on our Honors American Literature course, turning it into Honors American Voices. And we're really able to bring in the diverse voices of the American experience. Students right now are reading Louise Erdick's Night Watchmen, the story of Native American experience. And if you've been following in the news, the schools and some of the stories of what has happened to Native American children over the years. And it gives you a sense of just some of the different themes they're exploring. Our senior inquiry course is modeled somewhat on the AP Capstone Experience, but it's not beholden to AP. It really is our own creature. And it's a great capstone opportunity for kids to, whether it's independently explore an interest that's of a great a great passion of theirs. It can dovetail very nicely with the kids who are in any of the academies, that if you have a kid who's in computer science or robotics, really wants to dive down into that reading and writing and create those kinds of products, there's opportunities for them to do that. Or even for the kid who just wants to go out and create, you know, make a difference in the world and create action and get involved in activities around the community or create events. What does it take to do the research, to understand, to write, to promote and to make those kinds of things happen? And the the unit titles there at the bottom sort of give you a sense of that inquiry exploration that they have. Some revised units include our identity and coming of age units, which we've had for many years in the freshman sophomore experience. But we've been able to diversify the voices and perspectives in there. So, you know, no longer is coming of age defined by Holden Caulfield and Catcher in the Rye, but rather many titles that students can find and connect with, um, in many cases, going right over here to that wall of memoirs. And finding the titles that speak to what kids are going through and in ways that kids are curious about or exploring or engaging with. Uh, and this sort of articulates, as I said before, with that English three global perspective that students are encountering. Changing direction a little bit, one of the goals, following up on the the data discussion that Ms. Cantelisi Hayde was highlighting. We're really developing capacity this year. We are employing three different data platforms. You've heard about Linkit. My AP Language teachers are using AP Classroom, which has a series of eight to 10 unit reviews. And we're also piloting an AP Lit, uh, UWorld, which was offered to us for free at the end of last year to pilot, and we're trialing it a little bit this year. But in each case, you have multiple markers of measuring skills throughout the course of the year. And in terms of what the teachers are doing, we've been through that first phase. So they're identifying what the weaknesses and what the strengths are. They can begin to manipulate that information. We can look at it at the grade level. A teacher can look at each of their classes and see if there's differences. Or they can look at groups of students within classes or individuals in the case of RTI students and say, what is that student's particular need? What are the skills that they struggle with the most? As professional learning communities, PLCs, they then get together and they talk about what they are each seeing. What is the data telling us? What are you noticing? Do are we all struggling with that concept or am I having success with that? And that's really a conversation for further in the year. But um, it also allows them to know that there are areas where kids are doing well. And even though that might have been something I emphasized, maybe I don't need to emphasize it as much, but rather divert attention over to these areas of need. And then as you move move through each cycle of assessment, you're reevaluating, how did we do? Did they do better on some of those early skills? Did new skills present themselves that we have to address? And each step along the way, you can kind of evaluate that. And you've probably seen diagrams like this that show that that cycle of data analysis, goal setting, responding to it, reassessing, and then analyzing once again. I won't say too much on response to intervention. Uh, Ms. Cantelisi Hayde spoke about that. We are, though, focusing on the juniors a little bit here because they're the ones who have the new graduation assessment coming for them this year. And for the past two years, they have not had standardized assessments. So we are identifying and reaching into classrooms to to work with those students or study hall or reading and writing labs. Or because teachers have access to this data, I, the classroom teacher, knows this particular student needs this skill focus. So how do I put emphasis or extra attention on that need in my conversations with that student or the work that that student is doing? You got the start strong data. What I found interesting here, as limited as it was, three years ago, the last time we had the NJSLA, our freshmen and sophomores, the proficiency rate was about 81 to 83%. So looking at less support and some support, that's landing in that 80% range. Whether or not that matches up to that those numbers, um, that struck me as sort of an interesting barometer against what limited information we have here. But as we work with Linkit, we'll continue to see if if that holds or if that fluctuates. And then um, kind of what was alluded to, as you get results, you learn what skills kids are doing well with and you learn, okay, what are the areas that we need to focus on? So some general observations. Kids have a little bit of a tougher time with literary texts than informational texts. Informational texts by their nature seek to be clearly giving you a line of argument or reasoning. Literary texts, they're more complex, they're more inferential, they're more symbolic, they're more craft-oriented and you kind of have to infer a little bit more of what's going on. So that becomes an area of concentration. Something else that sort of struck us is that kids really struggled with, um, depending on how familiar you are with the the park or the NJSLA. They have certain items which they call like text hotspots or drop and drag items that often, instead of asking you, you know, pick the correct answer out of these five, it's saying, here's eight pieces of evidence. Select three of them that support that idea. So right there, kids are juggling more variables in that moment. And also, they haven't done these tests for the past two years. So they're a little bit out of practice. So that's something that we're going to have to look at as we go forward. So same thing for grade 11. Just noteworthy here that this didn't include the AP Language kids because they were using the um, the AP Classroom. So this is the the non-AP kids. But again, the more complex, more multi-select, more variable kinds of things are the more challenging things for the kids. And then AP Language and using AP Classroom, you know, area of strength, areas of growth. And already the teachers are beginning to look at this data and they're coming up with ideas. They're saying, okay, kids are, they're struggling with like these multi-select items. So maybe some of the tasks that we do, if I'm asking for one example, maybe I'm saying, provide three. You know, read through this and find three things in this this piece that really support the the author's argument. Or find um, three moments in this short story that really pivotally develop the character. So giving kids sort of simulations of those types of experiences. I can do that in a one-on-one conference. I can do that as a task in a literature circle. I could do that when we do our silent sustained reading for the day. I can say, all right, we're going to read for 15 minutes. I want you to identify this or this or this. Think about that. And then when you're done, share it with your partner. Let's hear a few of those. What are we seeing? So already, teachers are thinking about the tools and the mechanisms that they use in their day-in, day-out instruction and deciding, how do I refine? How do I tweak? How do I make it address the things that we want to give the kids more practice with? This is just sort of the schedule for the year, uh, where your Form B and Form C happens, where that graduation assessment is in March. So that kind of has its own unique sort of challenge, being earlier in the year. And then at the bottoms, it's kind of the ongoing supports, be it spring tutorials, RTI, that we kind of have going on throughout. And uh, these are the teams. These are the teachers who are working at each of those levels. And you'll notice um, by design, teachers will often have their foot in more than one level. I'm working with freshmen, but I'm also working with juniors so that I understand about what I do here and how, what the expectations are going to be there. Uh, one of the other nice dynamics is having teachers who are teaching both at an AP or an honors level, but also working at a CP or an academic level. So they can really appreciate the breadth of skill sets that kids bring to the classroom. And I know from my own experience, you learn very quickly that the things you do in an AP classroom, you can bring to a CP classroom. You just have to adopt them and the kids are just as eager to to run with those kinds of things. So as I said at my opening, we have a great team. They're a dynamic bunch. They're creative. They're always inventing and reinventing themselves and they look forward to the challenges of the year. So I thank you. Questions?
Thank you. All right. Anything for Mr. McIsaac?
Go ahead, Rob. I have a question. Uh, you mentioned, uh, you used the word authenticity at the beginning of your presentation. Can you tell us, do any of the writing or other products that students create address authentic audiences, i.e. audiences beyond the classroom?
Yes. And it's it's sort of the goal of the process. Again, old school, you were always writing for a audience of one.
Correct.
Me, the teacher. At a minimum, the audience is with the amount of like peer sharing and peer feedback. So our peers are reviewing our work. And um, by design, you're trying to create product that has a place in the real world. So teachers experiment with everything from, you know, we're going to read Romeo and Juliet, you're going to read some articles about teen psychology, and you're going to write a letter to your parents that brings all of those things together and just talks about what's going on in the teen brain. And let me tell you about the story of Romeo and Juliet. And let me talk to you, mom and dad, about, you know, why I'm the way I am or something like that. Or or kids who are engaging in, I'm trying to remember the the NPR initiative where they have you go and interview like a grandparent over the holidays so that you can put that narrative together and submit it to the Library of Congress. And we've really tried to do a lot with the the lamp as well. I mean, you have this vehicle to publish in-house and solicit from students. So sometimes you're getting to those audiences, oh, a popular one in English three. As you're identifying a topic or issue that you're passionate about, who's who's somebody in the community who has weight around that issue from a local political representative or legislator? I know Dr. Moore has received letters, probably Mr. Panico, where kids realize that they can engage in the real world and the power of writing can get their message to those folks.
That's very exciting.
Yes, Mr. Davidson.
Can we get a copy of your presentation? There is so much useful information in it.
I shared it with Ms. Spitzer, so I think you have hard copy. And then if you want electronic, I can get that through to you as well.
Think about them.
If you go to the superintendent's report, it's attached.
Yeah, it should be there already.
Yeah, we'll get Jess's there as well.
On the board, Dr. Spitzer.
Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you. I didn't see that.
Yes.
So, you know, excellent presentation. And I know from my own kids that attended these courses, very rich, robust curriculum, and it's done them worlds of good down the road, including lifelong learning. Uh, so I thank you personally for that. I am interested in some of the sub-scores in, you you talked about inference. That's a tough one for students, as well as academic vocabulary. Do we have any data that show how our students do with with regard to that? And you did also mention you target that, and I'm convinced you do. But how how, for example, do we target academic vocabulary?
Well, I guess the vocabulary that you tend to, well, what you see on the assessments tends to be selected vocabulary in the passages that you're reading. And then the most, your approximate understanding of what that that word is. And we actually do tend to do quite And we actually do tend to do quite well. I mean, the argument when it comes to reading is you become a better reader by reading. And the more you read, the better it gets, as opposed to discrete vocabulary study. But where academic vocabulary does come in is, it's the language of literature. You know, do we understand characterization, conflict, plots, theme setting? When it comes to argumentation, do we understand the language of rhetoric and argumentation, ethos, logos, pathos? And we embed those into the curriculum so that when you're in those narrative units, those argument units, those are the concepts that you're studying. And kind of back to the point, when you're writing that letter to a legislator, how are you incorporating ethos, logos, and pathos into that argument? Now admittedly, that is a little bit more of an AP-level skill. And the things that you're referring to, pre-common core was the domain of AP. And then it really sort of, many of those skills got pushed into standard classes as a result. And so then we just vertically articulate them down. The freshmen learn about ethos, logos, pathos. The sophomores begin to learn about rhetorical strategies, rhetorical techniques, so that by the time they're walking into AP language as juniors, that's not shockingly new to them. They've had some experience with it. The trick in AP language is like, great, how is the author now using those things to effectively get a message across? And that's sort of that next level challenge. But again, it's questioning, it's tasks. You know, I could ask you an old-school question, what happened? Or I can ask you a more involved question about, you know, let's talk about how the conflicts this character faced and what we can infer about what it means, or zeroing in on a moment, what is an author saying that they're not saying? What's between those lines? What is suggested by this? Find that phrase, find that word that is the crucial lever in this passage that we're reading, and let's explode that and talk about what's going on there. And, I mean, to be honest, that's as much art as it is science when you're engaging with it. And, I mean, that's part of the magic of the discipline, and whether it's poetry or argumentation. And it's hope, it's part of what we hope to impress upon the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So, thank you, Ms. Candelosi-Hayes, Mr. McIsaac, for lots of information to chew on tonight for us. And again, the invitation is open to continue to reflect on that for the board. And if you have additional questions, don't hesitate. We'll do everything from revisit some of these in committee meetings to bringing the answers from Brendan and Jessica. We'll bring them back if we need to. I don't have anything else in my report tonight, but I do want to just mark that we're in this space, our first meeting back in the IMC. And you can still certainly see there are some rough edges here and there where we're wrapping some stuff up. But we are pleased to be in here, and just this renovation has really come through in all that we had hoped it would in terms of, you know, student fabrication in a makerspace that's much more formalized than what we had back here. We've got student presentation and oration on this stage here under this beautiful skylight, and that beautiful light fixture, too, which we all loved and were surprised by as it went in. This open space, which can serve all kinds of purposes, along with study areas and classrooms around in the corners, it's shaping up to be exactly what we'd hoped it would be. Still some rough edges as we finish it off, but I'm glad for all of us to be in here tonight. I do need you to take a vote on one motion. It's the HIB report. And then the policy is there for your information in the organizational items after our public comments section, but there's nothing there for you to move.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Can I have a motion to approve HIBs 2122, 004, and 005?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Connie?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. Rashard?
Yes.
And Mr. Panico?
I'm abstaining. I was not here. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for the residence forum. This is for any items that are on the agenda. So if you wish to speak about any items on the agenda, please come up to the podium Medusa, which says that you limit your speaking to five minutes. Make sure you sign in when you get up there. Okay, seeing none, we will move on from there. Can I have, do we need a motion on, no, we don't need a motion on policy? Can I have an update from the Student Life and Program Committee, please?
Yeah. Student Life and Program Committee met virtually last Monday. It was quite a lengthy meeting because we had an awful lot of things to discuss, much of which was presented tonight by Ms. Candelosi-Hayes with regards to the results from the testing that took place. We also discussed the items that we wanted Mr. McIsaac to address tonight, which he did very well. And we have several items that were going to be...
I'll talk about that.
You're going to talk about it when we get to that, right. Several items that we will be considering for approval next week. Just to get you updated on those, there are two students who have requested early graduation. We reviewed the documents that were presented to us, and we felt in our committee that these were legitimate reasons for requesting early graduation. We also reviewed several curriculum revisions that Ms. Candelosi-Hayes presented to us. I urge every one of you to take a look at them in our board docs. They're quite remarkable, some of them. In fact, when I was reviewing some of the English courses, Mr. McIsaac, I wanted to take them. They were really, really exciting. So there's several English courses that were revised. There's a new English course, Senior English Inquiry, which is the one that really caught my eye. And there were revisions to music, science, and technology, engineering, and design. Again, there's a lot of details in these curriculums that I encourage you to take a look at if you have time. But for the most part, we felt that they were very, very well done. And then finally, there will be a policy-first reading on sexual harassment of students. This particular policy is required from the state, and it is in our board docs as well for your review. Finally, Dr. Moore is going to talk to us a bit about the Counseling Services Department. This is the draft of our theory of action. Dr. Moore, would you like to take over?
Yeah, thank you. I'll introduce this a little bit, and then if there's discussion to have, we can certainly have that. Otherwise, we'll kind of move forward on how we're working with this. So when we start with goals like the counseling goal that you all approved last month, we start with a goal like that, which is really asking us to rethink departmental work through data analysis and then through curriculum revision, really rethink their work. We start with principles. And I don't mean like Mr. Brandt principles, I mean principles like ideas, right? So as we started to talk about, well, what should we be looking at in counseling? What should we be measuring as we do a survey to begin that process of meeting the board goal? What is it that we want to begin to conceptualize around counseling as its core purposes? And so we talked about some principles that quickly developed into what's known as a framework here as a theory of action. So it's basically an if/then statement. One of the things that strikes me is that the board's purview over policy is an interesting way to go with all of this. And one of the things that we talked about in Student Life and Program was the possibility of the board, as it goes through its goals process this year with the Counseling Department, the board could revise its counseling policy to highlight the things that we want to do better, and also to celebrate the things and continue to grow the things that we do well, and just to give the school continued guidance on where the center of gravity in counseling should be. And we start a policy revision process, not just with, all right, well, what are the laws that we have to abide by in policy? But also, what do we believe? What are the ideas? So this is a theory of action that we drafted coming out of our Student Life and Program meeting. If this looks good, or if there are things that you would like to do to this, the way that we'll use this is that as we start to take more measurements, as we start to do client satisfaction surveys, for example, as we start to do focus groups, we'll be looking to measure various things under here as the beginnings of our understanding about what the center of gravity in counseling should be. So I'll talk quickly. I won't read this out to you. It's up on the screen as well. The ifs here are, and these are the things that we would measure, are we doing these things? So does our Counseling Services Department serve as a clearinghouse so that every staff member knows all there is to know about every student that's relevant to their education and their experience here? As a coach, as a teacher, as a club advisor, as a vice principal, as a whomever, can I look up a student and understand all there is to know about that student? And can counseling serve as the clearinghouse and the discovery for those kinds of things? And that requires, then, counseling certainly understanding and relating and knowing and understanding what the family's aspirations are for that student. Counseling then has to get to know each and every student inside and out. If counseling services provides support, so to what extent does counseling now, and to what extent should it provide tiered levels of support? So we've talked a lot, a lot, and done a lot of work around mental health and wellness in counseling. We have an incredibly robust system of support for our students in terms of mental health and wellness. We have four student assistance counselors, when a lot of districts are lucky to have one. We have an enormous school-based services program that is unique in our county. We have Care Plus wraparound counselors, licensed social workers coming in from, by contract, and that's not even talking about the grade-level counselor and all that that person does. So there's an awful lot of tiered support, and then all the connections out to outside agencies. So, but as far as growing in that conversation, we talked last year, for example, about growing capacity around race-based traumatic stress and some other needs. And also, no matter the source of that difficulty or stress, they aren't all mental health, wellness stresses. Some are academic, some are social, some are just things that students need help with to cope and get through any individual day and the individual stresses that they might be feeling around them. So are we truly reaching the tiered level of support for each student? And then lastly, and certainly not least, services and relationship to all students and their families with a full understanding of all the barriers that could come into place. Last year, in the spring, we talked about disproportionalities and how students from different walks of life were availing themselves or having access to different kinds of counseling services. And we noted, for example, that our Latino/Latino students were not experiencing as much college and career counseling relative to their size in the population as other students were. And so understanding that allowed the department to do a lot of targeted work to close that gap, so that by the end of the year, we were showing much more progress in students receiving proportional amounts of counseling across the three areas that Dr. Zurowicky talked about last time and that we talk about when we measure our counseling visits. So these are sort of the three ifs that we would say, if the Counseling Services Department is doing these three things, then we believe, the leap of faith there is, if these three things are happening, then this is the deliverable. That then statement is then sort of what we're talking about as really the goal in counseling. That each student, and each is a very powerful word, it's an important word, each as opposed to all, says something about our work on the individual basis with students. Maximizes their academic vocational and social emotional skills. So we're assets-oriented. Students bring skills to the table that we want to maximize. Certainly, we've talked a lot tonight about student weaknesses and deficiencies and skills gaps and all of these things. But counseling is also a place, certainly as all of our spaces are, to talk about each student's skills and what they bring to the table, and in the fulfillment of their unique aspirations. And I'll finish that thought with, in high-performing high schools across our country, there is an issue with students being sold one program, one outcome. And sometimes that outcome that schools are selling is an outcome that a very small percentage of students who attend that school actually achieve. So sometimes, schools in high-performing areas are guilty of approaching every student as if every student needs to travel the academic program that leads to acceptance at a place like MIT, or Harvard, or Yale, or some of those things. And we tell students that they have to have the senior year that does that for them, without potentially, in these schools, asking as early as we can, well, what is it that you want your senior year to look like? And that's, again, getting back to, how well do we know each student? And how well are we building a unique program for each student? So I'm always appreciative of the work in our English department for the amount of choice that they've been able to develop and integrate into that program, without necessarily creating levels of classes or tracks. In the room, we can have different experiences and different choices without being relegated to separate rooms of separately performing kinds of students. So as a theory of action, I wanted to share this with you tonight, if there's feedback now, if there's feedback later. But we do want to begin to move on some of the key things in here as we work to fulfill the counseling goal that the board approved last month. So I'll end my introduction there. Any thoughts, any feedback, anything to offer? Yes, sir.
Well, on the then part of it, I think it is extremely well-worded, to the point that you're making, that you made last, about students being corralled into a specific area. I think it's well answered here where it says, in fulfillment of their unique aspirations. And those aspirations can be multiple. And I really applaud the idea of early examination of where they're going to go, so that they can be prepared by us in their senior, junior, and senior years. And that would be something I'm not seeing in my limited experience with high schools, where selection criteria and questions are asked about likes and dislikes in a sophomore year, for instance, which you would have to do if you want to get to, making selections, having time to let the students develop that direction in their junior and senior years. So I really think that last point was, is something that we can do and be a little unique about. The other thought is that when you talked about in providing tiered levels of support, and you talked about certain resources, my only thought is, we don't know what those things mean yet. We have not. And so, you know, I am looking, I think you know, for a more, a structured part of counseling for a presentation that supports this, somewhat like Mr. Isaacs, McIsaacs, where I felt his presentation was really excellent because he grounded you in the English department and its resources first. So we know what we're, you know, how he's doing it. And then we went into what he was going to accomplish with those resources. I like to see a presentation of accounting so we know, and we see outside contracting, broadening, why do we do that? And what do they do differently? And, you know, so that we have an idea of what, you know, that's not the only thing. But in that, in that relationship, so we have an idea, not only on the English department works, but how the counseling operation works. And you did make a point previously that it may not always work that way, because we're working to improve counseling. We may, you may propose to us that we restructure and we change. Yes, but then we know more about that. So I just felt that that was something we have to have. But this is a good start, in my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you. Lisa?
Yeah, so I agree wholeheartedly with what Bruce said about the then paragraph, and applaud also the efforts to, you know, make sure that we address all students' needs and desires and goals. But what strikes me, in the first bullet point, talking about the clearinghouse, when you were describing that bullet point, you spoke a lot about serving as a clearinghouse by getting to know the student. Once we know the student, you said it probably three times. And what I noticed is lacking is concrete language stating that we are going to get to know our students. So what I'd like to see is language along the lines of, serves as a clearinghouse of information by getting to know
Yep.
...each student individually. Because I think that really humanizes this entire process.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so I'll add some elements there to the first bullet. It struck me, too, as I was looking at it, as you were talking, we talk about relationship down in the third bullet, but it's in the function of sort of, kind of an equity type of goal, rather than, does the student have the support? And if it's not the counselor who's necessarily the student's closest relation- And if it's not the counselor who's necessarily the student's closest relationship, is the counselor at least facilitating the relationship with others?
Right.
So, yeah, thank you for that.
And that's what I was going to ask about that as well, right? Because the third bullet point is the only one that talks about family.
Mm-hmm.
But that's the one that's specifically tied to bias and other barriers. So, if it's outside of the realm of bias and barrier, is family irrelevant?
Yep. No, it's not. I'm not saying, yes, it is.
Without the context, the transcript of that one would be odd.
Yeah.
So, maybe just in the first bullet point
Yeah.
we add by getting to know each student and family.
Yeah. And what I notice about these bullets too is the second two bullets are talking about what we're offering to students and to their families. The first bullet is framing its core there around, well, what are we doing for the rest of the staff, rather than what we're doing for the student. So, I think if we can reframe that bullet around the service that it provides to the student, then we'll get, and the family, then we'll get to exactly what you're saying. Excellent. Thank you.
So, we'll see round two next time?
Yes. Yeah, no, I'll share it with you probably in my update, on my Friday update, and then we'll, but as a framework, if it's working for us to begin to use to frame our measurements and our work on the board goal, then I think we're in good shape. Yeah. All right. All right. Thank you. I'm done with that, with, you know, gratitude for your feedback on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Life and Committee. Can I have an update from the Operations and Transportation Committee, please?
Yes, I have a very, very short update, very, very short and important. Operations and Transportation Committee met on Tuesday, November 9th. We discussed some of the construction projects, including this really awesome new space that we're in right now, which is kind of cool. We will have, for approval, a sports grant, $3,500 from Special Olympics to fund the 2122 Unified Sports Program. I think we applied for that back in June or July. Professional service provider, as listed. We're also going to be looking to approve and adopt the 2022-2023 budget calendar as shown on the agenda. And that's it.
Questions, comments? Can I have an update from the Personnel Committee, please?
Yes, Personnel met virtually on November 10th. We have seven items to move, which are a bit time-sensitive in nature. The first is a retirement. We have two resignations. I'd like to point out, one of those resignations, Felicia Touchstone, is going to be appointed in the next section, so she's staying in district. We have six appointments, several of which have been given approval by Dr. Moore interim. And one is Felicia Touchstone from the resignation prior. She's taking over as a security officer. We also have the resumes attached in board docs for those appointments. We have a number of per diem appointments, several of which were given approval by Dr. Moore on an interim basis. We have some hourly appointments, several of which were funded by federal grants. And interim approval been given by Dr. Moore for several of those as well, which were noted. We have some professional development. And then we have several revisions. And I just want to point out, the first one, Jennifer Amato, school nurse, we're adjusting a rate upon consideration of her work performed over the summer. The rest of the Personnel section of the agenda, eight through 16, are informational only for tonight for movement on the 22nd, including the policy that Dr. Moore referred to earlier. So, with that, I would like to move I-1 through 7.
So.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on I-1 through 7? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote?
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mr. Panico?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Any discussion on I-8 through 16, the part that was not moved? Hearing none. Any additional business or board comments at this time?
The only thing I'll share is the two policies on this agenda. I talked about the vaccination one. The other one that's, that the organizational item also speaks to is our Emergency Remote Instruction Plan. So, in the event that we find ourselves facing any kind of closure like we saw in March of 2020, that would, yeah, that policy governs our annual revision of that plan and those sorts of things. So, both of the policies there from the organizational item and from the Personnel Agenda are mandated policies. Again, not asking for your motion on those until next week for first reading. That's it.
Thank you. Additional business, board comments? None. Now, it's time on the agenda for the Residence Forum, for any items on or off the agenda. If you want to speak on any items on or off the agenda. Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for approximately 45 minutes? With no action to be taken, we return to discuss negotiations, legal, personnel, and HIB, please.
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. See you guys in exec.
Are we meeting?